Order and all members. Number two, approval consent agenda. All following items with concern reports and items of routine nature normally approved by Alphafa County will be approved by one vote unless in accordance with her desires to have a separate vote on any of all of these items. The consent agenda consists of discussion, consideration, and the approval of following either Jeanne. And I will say, Jeanne, you have one resignation, Regina Collins. We're still waiting on written that she contacted her principal and she has moved to Alphaca City. Have questions on any of those? Are there any motions?
I'll second.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Willheim? Number three, presentation by Alphafa County Assessor Jennifer Rose.
I want to thank Jennifer for being here today. She's worked really hard since she's coming to office to find us properties that are have not been taxed. She's got a good staff down there that you see her little car tucking around all the time. You know, we are in the middle of some major tax protests with oil and gas companies. And so tonight, she's going to kind of fill us in a little bit. And thank you so much for being here.
Thank you for letting me come and giving me a little five. I got a lot of numbers to give to you all today, so I've got some presentations that hopefully will help make the numbers a little clearer. So I requested a little time because there's something different going on in Alphafa County that we haven't done before. Well, there's two things going on, sort of. So Mrs. Anderson briefly mentioned that the protests from the BCE Mock. Well, there's two reasons. There's a bunch more oil companies jumping on that bandwagon, which is not good or fun for anyone. But number one, BCE Mock has a large protest. So I think that those other oil companies, regardless, were going to say, you know, we want that tax credit too. So they're trying to get all that they can get. Number two, we switched to a different company that is valuing our assets differently, happens to be higher. That company is with 44 out of the 77 counties. So in my opinion, that makes us more consistent to go with a company that's doing several other counties. Also with the oil crash, with the COVID thing, a lot of companies are trying to get all that money they can get. So it's nothing that our office is doing, but there are more protests this year than there was last year. Last year, we had one company. This year, we've got several that affect different school districts. The first thing I wanted to talk to you about is where we're standing at right now so far as your value, because that's bottom line, what hits you. Last year, your net assessed value in Cherokee School District was $34,514,000. That's on this front page at the bottom, last year's information. You had 33 million protested, which left you about 30 million that people were paying on. Not everybody pays their taxes, but for the most part, you were sitting at 30 million. This year, with the additional value that we were able to find, we've come up with 36 million. So that's an increase over last year by about 6 million. However, your protests from lots of different companies is coming in at 13 million. So the total unprotested this year is 23 million versus last year it was 30 million. That's the bad news. Bad news first, so let's move on. Okay. So also, if you're not aware, all the school districts and all the entities that gain adblocker taxes contribute to part of the assessor's budget. I have two budgets. I have one that runs two employees and all of our office supplies and all of our office equipment, and I have another budget that is for visual inspection. That budget, I send out a bill every year. I've given you a copy of what exactly last year's bill was and what new proposed bill this year is. The difference is going to be for Cherokee School District, about $9,700 increase. You're going, why? Because in that bill, the commissioners have really pushed for me to include my attorney costs that defend these protests that help us all out. So this bill's, this year's bill, last year, my visual inspection budget was 29, 129,600. This year, I want a regular budget of 120,000. So I've tried to cut that back, but the increase is a $40,000 contingency to pay for attorney bills that will defend our position on protests. That 40,000, I probably won't use at all. Anything that I don't use rolls over as a credit to you for next year, and that happens every year. This year, I'm rolling over about 9,500. So next year, I hope to even be rolling over 20,000. Our attorney bills last year, the county general paid 100% of, was $24,949. So right at 25,000, and I'm putting 40 in the budget. The reason for the extra is because there was some discussion with all eight elected officers at the county, and they said, if you go over, then you're stuck because county general isn't paying any extras. So you better make it high and not go over it. Okay. So that's why there's a little there, but it does roll over. So the first year, you will probably see a difference of what's paid, but if I don't use it and it rolls over and I continue to try to share my budget where I can, I will. So last year, you paid 32,531, and this year, estimate is about 41 million, or 41,700. Okay? So that's about a $9,700 increase. So what does our attorneys do for you? Since you're going to now be paying for them, on this page here, I've listed out several columns. You can follow, and you can see what, this is a list of all of our oil companies. There are several in protest, one, two, nine in protest, but not all of them are in Cherokee School Districts. One of them is highlighted in, the ones that are highlighted in blue, we're still in discussion with. They haven't gone to a formal protest yet, so we're kind of holding off on those. But I showed you the 2019 values versus the 2020 values. That way, you can see the increase of what task is doing for us in going out and finding that omitted property. You can see numbers to numbers how it's increasing and changing. So that goes down, and then you can see the total amount that was protested, which is the 13,477, at the very, very bottom of that pink column. That's net assessed value that's protested. In addition to that, this yellow Costa column, there's one particular company that is still protesting that had omitted property. The law says that when they omit it, they don't turn it in at all. If I find it, I can go back three years and go get it. So, and that one is the one that's highlighted in blue, and so we're still in discussion with them. I don't know what's going to happen, but if at all possible, we're going after that money. And those attorneys help us defend that position under the statutes that we want to go get it. So there was another one that we were able to go back three years, and they didn't protest at all. So there's already some money from three years back coming to you guys. So, and we'll just get those numbers rounded up and get those tax bills sent out, but you are getting some bonus money that you didn't know you had. So the reason that, the primary reason I'm here tonight is because we were discussing with my commissioners and the other assessors in surrounding counties about how do I pay for these attorneys if we're going to all share the cost? Everybody who stands to gain from adblocker taxes shares in those costs. And the most reasonable way to do that is to contribute to the visual inspection budget because it is prograded based on how much taxes you get. Out of the entire collective taxes for the county, you pay on a proportionate ratio. So we talked to the state auditor, and this is my email from the state auditor, and they said, yes, it's legal, it falls under the statutes, you can do it, but we recommend you run it by your DA, and we recommend that your schools are on board also. So I've given you a copy of the Woods County contract on this side. You can see it's Woods because I highlighted it. And then I've given you a copy of the proposed agreement that I brought with you coming tonight. The Alphafa County Board of Commissioners has already signed their part. It's going to be up to you to vote to do it or not. Now, your recourse, if you do not want to sign it and you do not want me to fight for those tax dollars, then you're going to have to make an appeal to your excise board because my budget goes through and I make it, and it gets approved by the commissioners, who are already on board with us, and it gets approved by the excise board. So the only way to stop this, if you don't want it, is to get the excise board to say, nope, schools are not paying for this, the county general's going to have to. Or if county, if the commissioners refuse to pay for it, I'm going to have to drop all my cases. But I've got to be able to pay for those attorneys if I continue to proceed. We've already spent about 24,000 last year and an additional 15,000 the year before on BCE Mock. So what do you stand to get from BCE Mock is a good question. I left that paper over there. But you stand, the BCE Mock has already paid their taxes for 2018 and 2019. Valerie Better, because they paid it, she has to keep it in an escrow account, and it's amounting to about $500,000 for Cherokee School District. So that money's there, and if we stop this protest, then it goes back to the company. So at this point, we almost have to continue fighting this fight. And in addition, because they're trying to use the same laws for loopholes for the other companies that are protesting, it just kind of gets wrapped into the same attorney bill. There's not extra, a lot of, lot of extra legwork, and that's what those will do, is those will defend that $13 million that's being protested right now this year. And it helps you go after the last three years. So if you want to take your time. Oh, and the last page is, we submitted this agreement to the DA, and she signed off and she said, yeah, it's clear and your intentions are clear, and I don't have a problem with it. So now it's up to you to read that, and that is the second to last page, if you want to read through that. And I have the originals to sign if you choose to approve it. Does anyone have any questions?
I think it's a really good explanation of what we've been talking about for about, what, 15 months now, what's going on tax-wise. And, you know, I, I think that we're only going to continue to see more oil and gas companies trying to protest the taxes just because of what we got going on. And our next item is to discussion and approve. So if you want to go ahead and say that, then we can discuss and approve.
Since I went and read those values, I will tell you, for 2019, BCE Mock has already paid and is due to you 274,686. For 2018, it's 248,000. So it's a little over $500,000. Let's just be in hell. And we're in that court case, and we're waiting on the court systems, and the wheels there are turning a little slow, but we're doing the best we can.
Number four, discussion of possible board action to approve the agreement to provide proportional contribution for the tax protests, legal fees of oil and gas protests.
I think what, what I recommend is that we pay the $9,700 when you're talking about, we've got over $500,000 tied up in repayments at some point if the judgment goes for the schools. If the judgment does not go for the schools, we do have the opportunity to appeal that in our referendum. So I think that when we're talking about that amount of money for a school our size, that we would have no alternative but to go ahead and appeal that if they don't vote in our favor because we just can't, we, we are a school that is oil and gas-based, not formula-based. So, so unless you guys have any other questions to ask Jennifer, I do recommend that we pay the additional $9,700, and it will come up in our visual inspection for this year, which is usually, we usually pay that up December.
Mm-hmm.
Wait until your money starts flowing in. And this, the court, that, it's in the court system right now, and it's not necessarily an all or nothing vote. They could easily award some of it to the school and not all of it. Obviously, we don't hope for that. That's just into the court system, so I couldn't speak to exactly how that's going to go. I feel like we have a strong case, at least on a very good portion of it.
You want to start at the, have they paid any taxes to any schools?
BCE, BCE Mock is paying to some counties, but they are smaller amounts. Other counties have just said, fine, you can get away with zero. We're going to wait and see what Alphafa County does. Because if our judgment goes through, then they're going to go back and get three years taxes, but they don't want to pay the attorney bill. So our county is actually the largest for BCE Mock. Woods County and Grant County are the largest for Sandridge. That's another company that's protesting in those counties. So far, they are not protesting in Alphafa County. I anticipate that next year. And the reason we use an outside attorney is because our ADA is our free legal. But they have, when this started in 2018, our ADA, I believe, was Brian Mitchell, and he said, you know, I just don't know about enough about adblocker tax law and tax law regarding oil and gas companies. So we went to an expert attorney. He represents, I know of five different counties that he is representing in lawsuits for the last two years. So that's kind of his bread and butter, that's his, his expertise, and he always gets back with me within 30 minutes if I call him. He's very accessible to us, and he does a very good job at fighting and understanding how those statutes are written. Any other questions? Do you approve a motion to approve?
I'll wait and second it.
I have the originals that you want to sign them tonight. And I just need a majority signature.
Excuse me, question, Shane.
I second it.
Willheim?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
If you have a sign for Jennifer, then move on. Oh, there's two copies, Shane, and one original will stay with the school and one original will go to the. On top, what president? You said she's acting president when she signs tonight? That's fine. I don't think it's going anywhere other than our office and your office. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Anytime you guys have any questions, if you think of anything later, just give us a call.
And what I will, we've talked about is that the next date is June 17th for a hearing, and then that's a date where the final hearing date should be set for an answer on the money that is just being held for us. So we're going to hope that it's pretty soon.
She'll, she'll take one. We'll keep one.
Thank you, Jennifer, very, very much.
Number five, discussion of possible board action to surplus Chromebooks and book bags for seniors to purchase.
What we do every year, as long as we can afford it, is we offer their Chromebook and their, and their bag to them at about, I think it's about $30 with the bag, is it 20?
20.
Is it 20 completely? We, we offer those students for 20. They've been using these for two years. It travels with them as, for every year, and we have 20 this year that have said they did want them and four that said they did not. And I think it's a nice thing that we're able to do for seniors going into work world or into college or career path. So I would recommend that we do that this year.
Do you approve a motion? I'll second. Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Willheim?
Yes.
Number six, discussion of possible board action to continue precision testing, promontory spread, asbestos services.
Every year, we, we have to contract with someone that does a asbestos check for us, and they've been a good company, so I recommend we just continue. A lot of the things we're going to do tonight are the yearly housekeeping and keeping that with our insurance and associations and things like that. Decision is helping one of those.
Do you approve a motion to continue?
I'll second that.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Willheim?
Number seven, discussion of possible board action on membership of CCOSA, OSSVA, OROS, OSAG insurance for workers' compensation, and OSIG liability insurance for the 2021 school year.
So that's our associations. The COSS Association is Administrators Association. OSSVA is the Board Association. ORUS is Rural Schools. We all kind of get together, we have a lobby that makes sure that the interests of rural schools are always being not neglected at the Capitol. OSAG is Insurance for Workers' Compensation, and OSIG is our liability insurance for the entire school district. And Bria Allen has that through the Ellis Company, and I recommend that we continue on with all of those.
I'll make a motion to continue. Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Willheim?
Yes.
Number eight, discussion of possible board action to appoint superintendent and agent to ensure compliance for AHERA, programs purchasing agent, hearing officer for vocational programs, complaints and civil rights complaints, risk manager at OSHA programs, and the official representative and acting agent for the board in connection with applying for any federal, state, and local funds such as E-Rate, Title I, Title II, Title IV, Title V, Title VI, Title VII, and/or any other brand or programs that would benefit charity public schools for the school year 2021.
That is just the housekeeping item that allows me to pursue our interests financially with federal programs and all of the other entities that were listed.
Motion to appoint superintendent and agent. I'll second. Willheim?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Number nine, discussion of possible board action to renew Kellogg and Sovereign as consultants for E-Rate for the 2021 school year.
Kellogg and Sovereign, they file all of that E-Rate for us, and E-Rate pays for our internet line service, internet, the line, actually the line?
Telephone lines.
Telephone lines to actually have the internet. So it's just a government fund that we have to apply for each year, and it is a very difficult application, and I am very thankful to have Kellogg working with Amanda Tucker to get that done. So I do recommend we stay with Kellogg and Sovereign.
Shane, second. Parker?
Yes.
Willheim?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Number 10, discussion and possible board action on temporary appropriations for the 2021 school year.
Our auditors have presented and given us an amount of money that we are being allowed to spend for the 2021 school year. That amount is $6,239,269. 6 million, 239,269 dollars for the general fund. For the building fund, they're allowing us to spend 278,000, 278,005, I'll always mess that up. And for child nutrition, they're allowing us to spend 137,839. That is what we take to the excise board that says that that's what we know that we'll spend, and then if we overspend, you have to go back and you have to do a supplemental appropriation. But what this does is allow us to keep our funds and spending moving starting July 1 until we actually get our budget in in October. So that is what we have to turn into the State Department of Education, so I do recommend that we approve that.
Make a motion to approve the temporary appropriations. I'll second. Gibson?
Yes.
Parker? Willheim?
Yes.
Number 11, discussion and possible board action to renew the contract with Alphafa Plus for the 2020-2021 school year.
We are going to renew with Alphafa Plus a very, very scaled back limited amount. I believe we were getting a full-service contract that brought an agent into our school twice a month, and we were paying approximately $40,000, $46,000 for all of the materials, for all of the books that were standard-based materials. We have scaled that back this year to, I think, what was it, Judy, 14?
Yeah.
About $14,000, though we still need to accept a contract for that. So as a cost-cutting measure for next year, we have had about $30,000 about that contract.
I'll make a motion to renew the contract with Alphafa Plus. Number second. Willheim?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Number 12, discussion and possible board action on the contract for the audit with CHAS W. Carroll for the 2020-2021 school year.
Carrolls have done a great job for us for many years, and I always appreciate them being so available and following, and providing with back work. And they're, they're very good to help me when I need answers with anything, so I do recommend that we stay with Carroll for the 2021 school year for the audit.
Willheim?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Number 13, discussion and possible board action on the contract with the Center for Education Law for the 2020-2021 school year.
That's Andy, the attorney. So I definitely recommend that we stay with our attorney, and they, they do a good job, they have a reasonable price, and they've just been there for us. So I recommend to stay with the Center for Education Law for the 2021 school year.
Make a motion to continue the contract with the Center for Education Law. Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Willheim?
Yes.
Number 14, discussion and possible board action to select milk bid based on the lowest bid for 2020-2021.
Okay. We have one bid, so we will probably be taking it. Highland Dairy is our milk bid, and they, they do three different bids, they, or two different bids, they separate it out by how they're going to deliver it to us, and I don't know.
I don't either. So I suggest, if we would like to have milk, that we go ahead and take that milk bid.
Take a motion again with the Highland milk bid.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Willheim?
Yes.
Number 15, request executive session to discuss approving 12-month employee contracts and extra duty schedule for the school year 2020 to 2021. This executive session permitted by 25/LS 307B1.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Willheim?
Yes.
Time?
7:32.
Willheim?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Time?
8:32. During the executive session, we discuss approving order law, approving 12-month employee contracts, and extra duty schedule for the school year 2021.
Go say your proposal.
So, on, you need to use say that.
I'm hoping right team.
Discussion and possible board action to on 12-month employee contracts for 2020-2021.
I'm going to ask that you take no action because we need another month. We're just not ready. We just weren't, we just needed more information because we've got some changing and things that are going on with our 12-month people, and we'll have those ready for you in July, if you'll just take no action on that one.
Number 20, discussion and possible board action on the extra duty schedule for 2020-2021.
I'm going to recommend that you approve the extra duty schedule that you're putting out there for 2021.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Willheim?
Yes.
They have all the vacations, so we will take no action on that.
Number 22, superintendent's report.
Well, we are, we ended a really unique year Friday night with a graduation for some kids that really turned out so nice. I think everybody was glad to see each other and, you know, just be back in our school community mode, and I want to take this opportunity to thank Jeremy Hickman and his teachers and his crew for putting together such a nice event that the kids will, they lost a lot from being out of school, but at least they got to be together and work across the stage and have that. So kudos to Jeremy, he did a really good job, and Michelle Baldwin and Gayla Faels and Judy Porter and all the senior moms and everybody that had anything to do with it. It was just really nice, so I appreciate that. We have moved out of distance learning for last year, and now we're in full planning mode for what's going to happen next year. And you'll see that there's a lot of schools that have put out plans that have got several different ways to do education. We will, we'll have basically three plans too. We'll do normal school when we start back. We're just going to pray that we get to go back and be as long as we can. One day a month, we'll do distance learning so that we stay on top of what we have learned and what we might need to do again. And then if we start having cases of COVID-19, then we will be following the CDC recommendations for closure, and I believe that there'll be a lot more leeway for schools to make their own determinations on that. So I think that I'll be looking at what the CDC says and be following that pretty closely. I think things work best if we just, unless there's something that pops up and we all of a sudden start getting lots of cases, if we just start slowly planning to be back into our routines. Fourth of July celebration will be held with Main Street and Rotary at our complex. Fireworks will be there. We, they'll be, the Rotary, Rotary and Main Street will be going through COVID-19 training so that they know what to do as far as social distancing and how to explain it to people who come for the event. People come at their own discretion. Then we're going to go ahead and have this, Miss Cherokee, Miss Cherokee on the 6th of August, which is before we start school, and so we'll get everybody in the auditorium, we'll do social distancing, and the Miss Cherokee group will do COVID-19 training so that they understand what their responsibilities are as far as making sure that nobody else is in danger from them. And then we're going to start school. So hopefully, because, and we're starting our athletics program a little bit later than what the OSSAA allowed, they allowed June 1st, but since we have graduation on the 5th, I wanted 10 days to be able to kind of gauge what we had, make sure nobody got sick, we didn't have anybody that starts reporting, and then we have to track everybody they've known since birth. So on the 15th, we will open our facilities up to limited activities, which means that the coaches will have the ability to get with their teams, do training, do practicing, always keeping with social distancing. We will not be going to any camps this year. We will not be having camps this year, and we won't be opening our facilities up for outside events. So we are really just going to try to do this correctly, slowly, and then when we start school back up, we're going to, we will have talked about and trained with COVID-19 with our teachers and with our student population, because there's a lot to it when we come back. It's not just, it's everywhere. It's your buses, it's your ventilation systems, it's all of those things. So we're gearing up, getting ready, and we have really good people that are able to make sure those things happen. So other than that, we've got, June is the end of the fiscal year, we're getting reports time, and the ladies in the office are working really hard, and just headed toward July 1 to start the new calendar year. And I will be bringing a modified schedule for approval in July that shows all these changes and things that were there. So unless there's any questions, I told you you're going to have none.
Number 23, new business?
No new business.
Number 24, motion to adjourn. Second.
Willheim?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Time?
8:39.